Here.
Here.
Is there anyone desiring to be heard? None. Consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
I heard Brad and Tom.
Yep.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All in favor, all in opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Any communications?
None. I'm sorry. I'm in my own little world here.
I'll just add that Mr. Zouick, Bob Zouick, passed away last month. He was instrumental for the village with running a business, the fire department. And he was very active with the Clark House. So he will be very much missed in this village. Community reports, building board?
Building board met this evening and approved an occupancy for Third Coast Heating and Cooling at forty-five seventy-one North one hundred twenty-fifth. And entertained a presentation on the of the, on the future of the property at one twenty-seven oh one West Hampton Avenue. And we denied and, or I should say tabled, an occupancy permit for D N A Motors at that same address. And everyone.
Thank you. Community events?
Community events is scheduled to meet a week from tomorrow. That being said, community events held a successful breakfast with Santa. In December, we served fifty-eight children, twenty-one seniors, roughly sixty-five adults. Huge success. Seemed like the community really enjoyed it. Feedback online on Facebook was well received. It couldn't have happened without the help of pretty much this entire panel. So thank you all. Ben, thank you. And the community events group and the report.
Thank you. Report of the administrator.
It has been a very busy past couple of weeks. We continue with tax collection. It has significantly weaned off so far. I would say we probably collected close to seventy percent of what we're expecting. Tax collection continues until the end of the month. Water and sewer bills were due on the twenty-seventh of December. We're still getting a couple of payments for that. We have an open job posting for our deputy clerk, our part-time deputy clerk position. So anybody who is interested, qualified, please feel free to send me an email to find out what you need to all do. One of the bigger projects that our office is looking at is kind of in tandem with item C is looking at our zoning ordinances and kind of planning for the future, fixing up some permit forms and just kind of enhancing what, what the code currently says and clarifying some things. So with that, I yield back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you. New business, discussion and possible action on resolution twenty-five dash oh one, a resolution to adopt a general fund balance policy.
Yes, so this resolution is adopting our general fund, uh, fund balance policy. Right now, we have, I would say we have one that's not exactly written on paper. But the policy that I had in the packet was given to us by our financial advisor, Ellers. It was looked over by myself compared with other municipalities. It's very much in line with a lot of what, what other municipalities have. Basically, it details that we have to have a specific amount of general fund balance at all times. If we go below that, we have to have a plan to recoup it. If we go above that, we can have the, the village board can move some of that excess into the capital fund to be spent on one-time purchases such as vehicles, technology improvements, stuff for the park. So that it, it kind of just, it, it lays all of that out. And I am very happy to say that currently our general unrestricted general fund balance falls perfectly within the range of what we have detailed in the, in the policy.
And that's what we've had for the last couple of years, right?
Correct. And every, every year we've gone up since two thousand seventeen.
Yeah. Okay.
That's the goal, right? To get us back to where we were further.
Correct.
Right?
Trying, trying to get, get us within that healthy range. We don't, I'll just say, one of the, one of the risks and the reason why we have kind of a, a ceiling on that is we don't want to be stockpiling money as that gives the impression that we are not spending the resources that we have to the fullest extent and we're delivering as much as we, as we, we possibly could.
Any additional questions?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash zero one for the general fund balance policy.
I'll second that.
Brad and Tom, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Ordinance twenty-five dash oh one and ordinance to repeal section eight dash twenty-four of the Butler Municipal Code regarding soda water beverage licenses.
So the, these licenses, they have not been applied for or approved since two thousand seventeen. Basically, it's, it's soda water, basically allowing businesses to sell soda. I, I, we haven't enforced it in years. I think, and a lot of municipalities around us don't have this anymore. And I want to have clean books, right? I don't want to have laws on our books that we don't enforce. So I, I honestly think that we, I would favor getting rid of, of this section of the code.
This ordinance will delete the code.
Correct.
This section of it.
Okay.
Any questions?
Is there a motion?
With that, I'd make a motion to, do the repeal the section of eight twenty-four for the municipal code?
Second.
I heard Bill and Pat. Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Item C, discussion regarding future ideas for current Hampton Avenue Business District.
So I included a memo in the agenda packet, kind of outlining how this came to be. The, the, I would say the, the catalyst, this has been kind of on, on our radar and has been requested before. But the catalyst was kind of what was, what's been happening along the business district with some of the businesses that have moved in and the overall picture of what we want Hampton Avenue to look like. What, what, you know, what do we want to do with regards to aesthetics? I think that this can be expanded, not just from what, you know, what the uses, you know, we're looking at, but kind of, do we want to have more of a uniformed aesthetic with regards to building, uh, building components? Do we want to have, uh, like what, any type of signage requirements, any type of trap, you know, traffic regulation? Because I know that I've received a number of complaints since I've been in, in my position about, we had issues with deliveries, people getting the, the deliveries and just dropping them in the street and clogging up an entire lane of traffic. We have issues with signage where people have complained that there's too much signage. The sign, the signs are too big. Some of the signage on Long Hampton Avenue isn't as tasteful as I would want it to be. So it just kind of looking at that and seeing how we want to do this. And then this would start a bigger discussion on just again, overhauling our entire zoning code as it, it's, it's been a minute since it's been, you know, really looked at and, and overhauled and, and taken and redone. So I guess I wanted to just yield back to you guys and kind of start that discussion. What, what do you want me to do? What do you want me to focus on? That, that type of thing. Yes, sir.
If I can say something, about every five to six years, we go through the same thing on Hampton and one hundred and twenty-fourth north and south of Hampton on the aesthetic value of what we were looking for in the village. It's been laid out numerous times. I've been on this board a long time. It's been laid out numerous times on different aspects of Butler. If you want to go back through and look at all the plans, there's been numerous plans pulled up for drawing different types of ideas into the village. But this is something they bring up about every five to six years and nothing really ever happens. We've tried to change things. We did get a few things done about eight or ten years ago. But for the most part, everything gets a good, I, I like that idea and it gets shelved. So if we're going to do something, let's look at what was proposed from before and then bring it forward and see what you guys think, to be honest with you.
Do you, do you know approximately what year so it's where, so I can try to reference the meetings? Okay.
Just take your pick all the way back through.
Okay.
I've been here eighteen years in April. So just take your pick all over.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to know where to start.
Okay, with Tim, we did it with Tim when he first came here, with Tim Rhodes. And then when, uh, Kayla came in, we did it with Kayla within the first year, both of them within the first year. So if you want to start there, that'd be a good point to start.
Do you, and I guess I just, can I ask you just one question on that is? And again, I wasn't, I obviously wasn't here. So can you just give me, why do you think that the, that these ideas failed? I guess I, I just don't, I want to know if this was something where it was talked about and we said that we were going to do something and then it just never got followed through on? Or if it was something actually got brought to the board and the board shot it down?
Basically, it was agreed on, but never instituted.
Okay. So, and no ordinances, no?
No ordinances. Everybody brought it together. Everybody was happy with it. But it was never finalized as ordinance.
Okay.
So you mean put together like?
Oh, we had.
Draw, drawings of what we think it should look like? Is that what you're saying? I think it, I, to me, I think that's the, that would be like the end. I'd like to see us getting a grip on as simple as having some input on a, a business here on Hampton, not being able to paint its business pink. Right now, we don't, that they could paint it pink from my understanding, correct?
Why is that a problem?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Why is, why is?
I'm just, I'm, I'm using, I'm.
I understand, but I, I I think at some point we have to identify what exactly is our reach? If a business wants to identify as a pink business and that's how they want to brand themselves.
You're reading into just an example. Okay, so it could be, I, I, I don't know, any, any color. But I think we need to have not a sign with a half naked woman bent over that somehow this board okay or didn't okay.
We did okay. We did okay.
The board before.
Okay, but because, but that's, that's my, my point, right? Like, I can't believe that a, a board said that that sign out there is okay. Okay, so that's my point, I guess. So a color is not my point, right? Really. So you can say like, I'm not discriminating against someone who likes pink.
But that doesn't change my point, though.
And I'm not sure what your point is.
My, my point is simple. It's, it's what is our reach in telling a business what they have to look like, what they need to look like? If, if McDonald's wants to change the arches from golden to pink, but they're still McDonald's, isn't that up to them to brand themselves in the manner in which it's going to best serve?
What else do families tell McDonald's sometimes that they can't have that?
Oh, you're right.
We have a vision. We have, you know, at least something other than a free for all, you can do what you want. I guess that's the point.
Let me back this up a little bit.
Sure.
Let me back. Free for all that we have to have like some kind of standard other than we don't have one.
Okay.
Let me back this up a little bit.
Sorry if the pink thing kind of went the wrong direction, but my point is we don't have any kind of control of what's going on here.
Mr. Benjamin?
Let me back this up a little bit. Napa wanted to redo their building. Completely redo their building. It got to the point where they wanted to tear the building down and build a new building. That's how far this has gone. But because they have over three million dollars worth of product in that store, they have no place to put it while they renovate the store. So they're trying to make do with what they have. Now, we've been asked three or four times about painting the building. And Joe came back and he says, I'm just going to paint it gray. Everybody was happy with it. Okay, because it's, it's an uplift. It makes it look better. It's a new fresh paint. Uh, it got rid of the old Napa's insignias. It put Napa, Napa back on the target. That's kind of what we've been fighting with now. Joe has wanted to do things, but he does not have a place for three million pieces of product to rebuild his store. So a couple of other businesses that were in here were in the same boat. The sewing company that was down here a little further, they were in the same boat. They wanted to do a lot to renovate the store, but they had no room for this product to take it out and redo the store. So what point do we rebuild the village of Hampton? I mean, what part do we redo the Hampton Avenue Business District? And not put a big limit on the businesses here?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think that, that's my vision is, is to come and tell these businesses they have to now conform to a, a look of whatever the board would say it is. I don't, I don't think that, that's, at least that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying there, we've got to have some control over standards of, of businesses on Main Street that are just in disarray and not, you know.
Such as.
Such as. Such as, uh, peeling paint, uh, front of buildings falling down.
That's, that's a general, that's a village. They come in as it is right now. They're written in the codes. They must maintain their.
Signs, signs not, signs not being just put up because we can, because we don't, we don't have anything. We don't have any tools.
Yes, we do.
Okay, well.
Yes, we do.
I don't think there is because that sign across the street is there. So I don't think we have tools.
Sign across the street.
If I can just, if I can just kind of grab this back. The, again, the, the intent of the discussion was just saying, does the, does the village want to have, or does, like, what, what can we do to, to move forward with this? Does the village board want to have a more uniform look to Hampton Avenue? Is there a, a vision that you guys have for how it's going to look ten to fifteen years down the line? If you just say, we don't want to, to tell businesses that they can't, you know, we, that we want to have more of a, a, a saying how, how it looks? Because that's the whole purpose of the, the property maintenance and the zoning code is to maintain a certain aesthetic.
Right.
It, it, and that, that is within the, the power of a village board to set aesthetic limits. We're a village that says you, there is none. We don't require certain building materials. We don't require how things look. We don't, you know, say that you can have, you can't have pink or you can't have yellow siding or whatever. It, some municipalities do go that far. Germantown says the entire of McQuan Road has to be German themed. And, and, and other municipalities have very similar things. So does, is that something that the village of Butler wants to, to go towards? And do we want to also take a look at the business district and say, okay, you know, if we are going to have a used car lot, does it have to look, do we want it to look a certain way or can, or do they, do we just want to say, well, then you can just have it look however you want? I guess that's, that's my goal here.
Can I ask you a question about that, Ben? If we say, if, if D N A car comes in and, and they get approved, which in my opinion, they should have been approved tonight. But if they come in and they say that they have to have a certain look to them, does that change the other car dealerships on Hampton to have to conform to that? Or is it just specific to that one?
So Aaron can, can back me up on this, but I believe that what would happen is any type of ordinance change would automatically grandfather everyone that's currently existing and going forward as, you know, if, you know, let's just say the, the car dealership at the end of near one thirty-second, they were to, you know, close, move out, whatever. And somebody else moved in, then those new requirements would have to be enforced at that point.
Okay, thank you.
So my, my thought on all this was the reason I thought it would be a good idea to have this discussion. I mean, we went way into the weeds. And I didn't think it would go, but to back up, you know, before you would write code or change code or.
Yeah, thanks.
Or anything like that. Is to have a simple idea or vision of what we want for the area. Correct. So.
And what are you thinking?
Well, my thinking was to get a discussion and a dialogue going. Okay, I've got some ideas, but I think the board could come up with many ideas. And then to just establish something as a target, something clear that we're aiming for. So for example, you use, you said Germantown says everything on their business district has to have a German theme, you know, so not that we would do that, but we could pick whatever we wanted. If we want to deepen our identity as a, you know, a train town as an example. Or if we wanted to make healthcare our theme or the arts or music, you know, whatever it would, you know, just to pick a topic or, you know, a type of a, of a store like that, but to have some more of a central idea of what we're trying to establish and grow into as an identity. And then work off of that and see what kind of businesses we would like to court and how we would court them and invite them and incentives we could do. And if we need to write code and amend it, then, then we do that later on and so on. But right now, in the absence of that, we have some of the mess with a lot of the questions with the car dealership and we have the one, the main one that really kind of woke me up to this was, you know, a nice office space right on the, on the avenue there and selling hot water heaters. Like, it's just not a, a pleasing thing. And even when I was going to get my signatures for being reelected, I had, literally had people tell me, when are we going to do something with our business district? Have places we can go to and enjoy being in our downtown? So I mean, the public, the residents would like that, you know, some of those things. And we could talk about those ideas. I, I wrote down ideas, you know, but uh, as far as kinds of stores and that kind of thing, but I think we, that might be a more better fruitful discussion to go simplify and just think, okay, what kind of a theme? What, what do we want our downtown? What's the word I'm looking for? You know, of a simple vision for that downtown area and then go from there. How do you develop that vision? But to get in the weeds with colors of signs and I, you know, for our process, I think, you know, for signage, I think it's good. Everything has to come before a building board. And if we don't like it, we don't approve it. I mean, at least I don't know how Bottoms Up got theirs, but that was a long time ago. So I'm not going to worry about that.
They just put it up.
Well, whatever. Okay, so then.
They didn't just put it up. It came before the board.
So that, that was my thought. And, you know, it, to start a discussion with that, and it's obviously it's very late, later than everybody thought it would be. But I, I don't, I mean, each community has their own main street. And then the types of businesses that end up there are kind of unique for that business. So I guess Butler, we don't really, I mean, we're not going to, you're not probably going to get a Starbucks or a grocery store. I mean, you're limited to what of who wants to come into the village. I can, I can understand what that is. I mean, we don't have people walking Main Street foot traffic wise as much as you had fifty years ago. So I mean.
I would, I would say honestly, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I would say that that is been a goal. You know, it, it to, I, I don't mean to, to be blunt, but I don't want to be somebody that sits here and says, well, that's how it is now. Like, I think that's the whole point of what Mark is looking at is what do we want it to look like? Do we, we, how do we increase the foot traffic? How do we become a municipality that Starbucks does want to move into? Again?
That's what we want, but just established, I mean, do we want to get people from outside the village to come in? Maybe we don't. Maybe we want to just fly under the radar. But just to make it clear what we want for our village.
Correct. I just wanted to make the point of it, it, just because how it is now, it doesn't, it shouldn't dictate how we move forward.
And, you know, as far, I think a coffee roaster would be a really good idea. Because they don't depend on foot traffic. They have, they become a destination. They have, they, they sell online and so on. They wouldn't be dependent on, you know. A chocolate tier would be another example, you know, so on.
Well, we do have Java train, but they're not on the main thread.
Nope. And Java train is good. I think other like businesses would be good for Java train.
I think they would be better served at a different location, but they're happy where they are. Unfortunately, we lost our foot traffic business when we lost James Pharmacy. We lost George Webb's. And for those who can remember, we lost the Chuck Wagon. And everybody from all over Milwaukee would come in to have their morning coffee and breakfast at the Chuck Wagon.
I actually, we can't get those places back. We replaced them with a Jamaican restaurant.
Yeah.
Mexican restaurant, but that doesn't bring the foot traffic in. Right. And that doesn't mean that we can't get a similar kind of a restaurant back if we aim for it.
Problem is, is we've got four restaurants in four blocks, right? And there's nothing, it's when you look at and, and to Paul's point, it's Hampton Avenue after five, six o'clock isn't a destination, right? It's.
Just because of what's there now.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So if it is the, the restaurant that they're more than likely going to go to is going to be the Butler. Right. So now on the corner of one hundred and twenty-fourth and Hampton, they've got a restaurant that's been there, or a business that's been there for a very long time. It's established. Everything between that and Java train is not established and continues to struggle for all of those various reasons. So how do we, how do we lend stability to those establishments? Whether it's restaurants or not, how do we lend stability as a community to those operations to keep them? So that that word of mouth could spread that says, hey, this is a great place to put a business. We're kind of landlocked in terms of what we're able to do there.
That's definitely a challenge that we have to address as we go through, you know, whatever process that we, that we do. But I would say the answer to that question is to have a clear goal in mind of what we're shooting for. Because right now, whoever comes in, if they meet the code, like we can't deny them technically.
I mean, right now, it's car lots and hairdressers.
Yeah.
You know?
Because we're not shooting for anything else.
But any, any, I mean, we might get, the bigger discussion might be having a, Ben and I talked a little bit about having a starting a planning committee and, and having a little bit more help with our, our zoning and our codes and what we can have businesses do. I mean, um, for the appearance wise, but we don't have any new construction. So anything we pass won't, I mean, no one's rebuilding, but.
Well, you got to start somewhere. And I would even say that that's not, I wouldn't disagree with doing that, but I would say equally, if not more important, is coming up with the main goals, the main vision of what we're trying to do with not only the business district, but Butler as a whole.
We tried, just give you guys another soccer. We tried years ago before they tore down the Sea Biscuit and it was an empty lot. And plus the, uh, office or the building that was next to the west of the Sea Biscuit, it made a large lot. Munson, at that time, brought in a plan from the, to the village. Now, he lives here in town. He's a semi-relater, or used to be or whatever, but he brought in a plan for a two-story L-shaped business on Hampton and one hundred and twenty-fifth street of businesses on the bottom floor and homes or rentals on the second floor and possibly a third floor. That was up to the fire department at that, if they would go to a third floor. And that was shot down because they said, oh, we don't want that in the village. We don't want all those apartments in the village. Didn't say anything about all the businesses that could be on the bottom, but it was all the way from one hundred and twenty-fourth to one hundred and twenty-fifth businesses. And then south on one hundred and twenty-fifth street is an L-shaped business. And that was shot down years ago by the village board because they didn't want all the, uh, stuff upstairs.
And what's funny is you look at the Mayfair collection over off of.
That's the model everyone uses now.
Exactly. That's what Munson wanted to do that years back. When that was empty lot down there before the gas station, before everything else.
So we, but we do have, and today we have a different board.
Exactly.
And that's the, we really don't have, I guess what Trusty Holdman is trying to convey is that we just don't have a vision or a plan, but we really don't know what could be out there to try. I mean, we have the, we, we're using the Economic Development Committee to help look at and help us as well. But we, at this point, take what we can get for, for business and, and we can't.
Right. And that's what we've been doing for years. I mean, all the, all this time, I think I've been here, what, maybe six years on the board, trying to get a grocery store in there. And we got one for, for how long they last? A year, a little cornered store in the Webb's building. Didn't work out. Because we were thinking about the people in the, the apartments.
Sure.
The elderly at our Regency since the last century.
And I would even say that that.
But we can't get a grocery store in here.
Right.
Our lots are too small.
Right. But I wouldn't even, so as an example of how that was then, this is now kind of a thing. So even in the last five years, there's been a lot of development west on Hampton Avenue and then others even more. So some of that traffic can go this way. And I'd be, I'm open to working with Brookfield, you know, to, to get a grocery store back and a, and a lot that's on their end.
You'll never get it.
Nobody wants to be there.
No, as they get, look at the population.
I, I understand the negatives. They always say there isn't the traffic, but again, I don't know if a traffic study has been done recently.
Have we talked with Butler? We.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
No one wants to be there.
I, I would just like to have a fresh, you know, look at, and I'm willing to, I'll put in the time. I'll reach out and talk to people and so on. I'm willing to put in the time, you know, if, where we're needed. I'm just saying, you know, perhaps we could wrap up this discussion with that. Maybe take this up at another meeting and just maybe narrow it down to, instead of the future of Hampton, call it a theme, if you will. Come up with a wording that'll narrow our discussion and make it a little more productive. And in the meantime, we can have ideas, like we can come, come to the next meeting with ideas on, well, it could be so and such a theme or, you know, and so on.
Did anyone in the audience want to contribute to this discussion? Because I would open it up to the audience.
I know you're all thinking about it. Please. We'll value the input. You might have to push the on button. Tab it once.
There.
Are you there? Okay. Charlene Benjamin, forty-five oh three North one twenty-sixth Street in Butler. In seventeen or eighteen, Kayla led a survey effort to build a five-year plan off of that. Is that something that the current village administration is aware of? Should that be something relevant?
We are aware of a strategic plan that was, uh, under consideration at the end of twenty nineteen and in the beginning of twenty twenty, then COVID happened and nothing was adopted that I know of. Um, I have been generously gifted, um, supporting documents by, uh, the former village president, current trustee, Ms. Tarks. Um, so I do have some of that documentation. I do have it saved on our M drive. I guess with, I would have to, you know, look deeper into that and see what the findings were, but since there was no official adoption of that strategic plan, there's nothing that I can, there's no, there's no action items, I guess, but I can definitely refer back.
Anyone else? Thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming.
We don't usually go this long.
Fifteen years, I'm going on my sixteenth year in Butler, living here. And I will tell you, I'm a business owner. I own four restaurants. Walkshop, Tommy Creek, Voltoza. I will tell you that what is being presented on businesses is exactly why I will put a business inside Butler.
Why is that?
The sign we allow, no ordinance, no control. What we allow to come in here is affecting the residents, and the residents want nothing to do with it.
Uh, elaborate on it, like, what, what we don't allow or what we do allow?
Both. I mean, I was sorry to cut you off, but.
Okay.
You know, when it fits more the needs, I guess, of what we want as a village to present is where we follow some of the rules. And then we follow some of the rules, we choose to overlook some of the rules in other areas.
How so?
I'm not, yeah, I'm not aware of overlooking any rules.
What rules are overlooked? I'm asking the question. I'm not.
I may ask you a question. Um, just right now, something I've been talking to the chief about, parking ordinances being enforced. And there's just certain things, but when it comes to like this, sorry, I need to go down a whole rabbit hole, but when we're talking about this, when I look at a business and I'm going to put something in, I look at Butler. Do I, I welcome women, children, families oriented. When I put business in, do I want to go next to half naked women that go over? My guests don't want to look at that. I don't care what, what it matters. Um, people that don't keep their property, just same as housing, you know, I live next to now almost three duplexes that will butt up to my property. And I see as my property value is going to keep moving, so they're not wanting to mow their lawn, take their garbage out. Um, not cut their weeds, you know, like, just stuff like that, where zoning isn't happening. We're not following through when it comes to the residents. We're not following through the businesses. That's what I'm saying.
I'll just say, easier, no, 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 please, this is great input. Easier said than done is what I'll, we're agreeing with what you're saying, but.
I don't want to come off strong. I wasn't planning on talking at all.
We're glad you did.
But for me and my husband, I have three children, you know, fifteen, thirteen, and eight. And I'm looking at, how am I going to finish out with my kids in school where I want to be in the Sussex district? Do I want to continue this in Butler? That's to the point me and my husband are at. Some of the stuff that we allow is attracting for riprap, smoke shop. Coming down here, you have people doing burnouts, going in and out of there, just the stuff happening. There's, there's too much for me to unbox in just once, but just an example of that is I completely agree when we're looking at a ordinance, you have to look at what you want to come into a community and what you want is that vision. And right now, it feels like we're just taking what we can get because nobody wants to be here, instead of fixing what's here and what's established and what's great. I remember going to the pharmacy and George Webb's with my grandparents as a kid. And when those clothes broke my heart, that's why I wanted to move here. Our upgrades, there's so much great stuff about Butler that people don't get to experience because they're afraid of it from seeing us.
Okay, would you do me a favor?
Yes.
Would you write down from your point of view, as a business owner, what you would like to see, the positive and the negatives, and give it to Ben? And so Ben can give it to us, to help us guide, give us a better guide to what people are looking for and, and worthy. I would really appreciate it.
There's, there's, I love, don't get me wrong, I go in, I freak them out, but just as a business owner, I'm holding on children walking in my business. I'd rather have a work with the crops for me, or a tanning salon, or something that's not, you're sitting at a table and seeing that, you know?
Sure.
I'm not saying that's not somewhere that I don't, we frequent it, me and my husband, but we don't bring our children there. That's all I got.
Okay. Yeah. Thank, thank you for that. Appreciate that.
And if I can just, I, this is, that's kind of going back to the administrator's report of what me and Aaron are looking at tackling. Property maintenance, zoning code updates, that's, that has been my bread and butter. And as, as I have informed the board, um, over the past year, um, particularly when it comes to grass weeds and other types of property maintenance, I have been extremely strict. I've issued citations. I have had DPW Mo over a half dozen lawns, um, because people don't cut them in time. I've had them do a number of things with that. So I just, I wanted to put that out there that I am aware of these issues and I am taking action and doing my best to, to do it. Um, but again, we have two full-time people that monitor that, so.
I, I just think just these, that input really speaks well to.
Correct, correct.
Of a clear vision.
Correct.
You were going to show it to?
Yeah.
Much come up to that. National TV and all.
Uh, Ricky Rick, one two seven forty, West One Dale Avenue. I am going on my twentieth year in Butler. And I would agree with a lot of if you had to say, as far as it does just seem like we are taking in what is available to us, my understanding from a financial standpoint. We need to make the money on the taxes and have the buildings, you know, and stuff like that. But I agree, you know, I used to, you know, frequently pharmacy and see the kids walking around and, you know, my kids are all grown now, but you don't have that in the village, you know, like you look at somewhere like Cedarburg, um, where they have that main street where it's very attractive. It's fun to be on that street. And the buildings, as you were saying, like, you know, colors, signs, whatever, I get all that. Um, they do have the creative, um, expression down there where the buildings are crazy looking and whatever, but that is the vision that they have down there. And they have, you know, gift shops and candy stores and, um, ice cream places. And, you know, we are selling fingernails and, you know, it's, it's just a different feel.
Sure.
Big shop, you know, it attracts a different kind of person than, um, what, you know, I originally moved to Butler for, like, the same thing, like, here's a Sussex school district. And how do you say it without putting across the, you know, you want to associate yourself more with this way.
Sure.
You want to bring this way here as opposed to the opposite. Um, and the grocery store, like you said, I mean, I went to that grocery store all the time. Um, and with foot traffic and stuff, like, I know Emmanuel Uzren has doubled in size.
Yep.
So that is double the traffic that is coming. And, um, but there again, you know, different dynamics. They went to choice, so it's not the same dynamic that.
Not all of them are though.
Right.
It's still an excellent school. Yep.
You know, in between things, but, um, you know, maybe if the businesses were presented a different front. That we would attract a different.
Yep. That's something, thank you. That's something we can work on. I mean, it's not that we take any business that we can get. It's those are the businesses interested in coming here.
Seems that way.
I, I understand. And I didn't.
I, I get it.
Yeah.
Um, I just meant that we need to have those buildings occupied and have unoccupied businesses or buildings, right? That we need them.
Well, and, and, and certainly, so there's many components to this, right? So a business isn't going to come here if they can't make money. So you know, because of our area and our demographic, you know, uh, it is what it is. Things have changed. So things have just changed. It's the simple reality of it. But that doesn't mean that we can't try to repurpose ourselves and still thrive. I believe we can still thrive, even though we're landlocked and so on. We just have to figure it out.
But like you had said, briefly, I mentioned something about looking at what the traffic study is, um, seeing if that has changed.
Yeah. 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 I mean, and I'll say this, it's hard to get those, like, I've reached out to Ali myself personally several times. And it's hard to even get them to agree to meet me and give me five minutes of their time and, and pitch it to them. So easier said than done, but uh, that doesn't mean we give up on it, because otherwise, uh, we're, there'll be a, we'll be going in a direction that we don't want to go.
Right. Yeah, I, I agree that maybe to think about what our vision as a community looks like. And where we want to go from, you know, where we are now. And, you know, we have a goal.
That's what a vision is. It, it, it guides your decision-making to achieve that ultimate goal. And that's what we want to establish. That's what we're talking about. Yeah.
And when you do things like the, you know, Hot Rods in Hampton, and if you have, and again, I understand it's not always easy to get those kinds of businesses, but, you know, little trade shops or like something like James Pharmacy that have, you know, all that kinds of stuff, you know, for people to look at and ponder and think about and wish for, you know, I mean, I would take my kids there and you know, they've all made their first purchases with their own money at James Pharmacy, you know, because they went there, they looked, they dreamed, they saved, you know? Um, so if you have those other kinds of businesses, you know, a coffee shop, it is unfortunate that Java train has kind of, you know, bought or beaten path. Um, but, you know, an ice cream shop, you know, that is always my, you know, joking dream, but to, you know, have an ice cream shop in Butler.
To have good ice cream at Java train.
So, yeah, just, I agree that it'd be nice to have an idea of where we want to go.
Yeah. Thanks, Nikki. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I'm Cassandra Nguyen. I've been enough from Butler in Wauwatosa, but I was here with my kids all the time from the cart shop and everything I brought them in. Took time at Crystal Shop, we went to sleep, all that. So one of the things I was going to suggest, I moved away and just came back with them the last two years. Because everything's changed with COVID, I started going to meetings with new entrepreneurs and seeing what kids are really wanting to do in their twenties and thirties now with different areas. She shines, um, she has an attorney firm that gathers, um, women together as minority businesses. They do a full women's week every first week of May. They come together all over the city of Milwaukee. And they have businesses, um, open up and they do nonprofit and profit that are people are trying to start out, they need places to go. They need to take money, try to finance and stuff. This is really unique for me to see. I've gone two years in a row. I sponsored last, this last year. So for ideas of businesses, to see what's going on, a lot of women want to be kind of, kind of want to have their businesses. They need little places like Butler. You get to get a bunch together. We just had one of the girls out of there. Andrea with the Alaskan fish, the salmon place, just pumped into Butler. So she came from that group of women too. So we have a woman in Omni Falls that came out of there. They started cake businesses, food businesses. I think you'd be surprised what women are looking for. We just don't have that contact with men. Don't need, we need help climbing and seeing them understand, do that. Maybe we will get some attorney firms who work specifically with nonprofits, small businesses, as well as businesses trying to start that are minority too. Minority is just one business, not one thing. So that's just.
Well, thank you. And, and one thing that comes to mind when you say that is that we are affordable. So they, I don't know what you pay in Cedarburg or those high Wauwatosa Mayfair collections, but we do have quite a few people, like the nail technicians that come through here and salons. Those are one or two owners or they have a chair and they're starting their business. So we, we do tend to cater to quite a few people starting out that way too. So.
But, you know, the, the nail factory or the salon, but like if they had, if Java train could put in, you know, uh, cars or flyers or, you know, menus or something in there and they could suggest, you know, hey, if you're looking for good coffee, it's right, right up the road, you know? And then that, you know, takes you from one place to another, you know?
Well, you do get a lot of traffic, I mean, with, whether it's, you know, Manuel or St. Agnes, you do have people coming into the village on Hampton or one hundred and twenty-fourth. So I think during the day, we do get a lot of vehicle traffic. I just don't think we have the foot traffic. So as we move forward, the vision could be just something to incorporate that, because I mean, you go out there now, there's nobody out there. I mean, we shut down at five o'clock. And that's okay, considering our area, we may not, we may not want to cultivate having a lot of foot traffic late at night. But we could cultivate having foot traffic during the day and on the weekends. And there's different ways to do that. I don't want to open up that kind of words right now. There's, there's different ways to accomplish that too, I think. So. Yeah.
As far as their confidence, I guess, you know, trying to get some kind of art studio, like, uh, chilling, eyeing off of the balls or a piece even sip or, you know, that can complement a coffee shop or a ice cream place or, you know, a cafe where people would spend time at more than one business in Butler. And then they can stop there.
Okay. Does anyone, thank you everyone for the input. I think that helps us. I mean, we know we have some work to do on that area and we can kind of go from there. Uh, would you be able to get your information to Ben or vice versa, just so we can have that on file? And then we can maybe use that information as we go. Does anyone have, else have anything else? Otherwise, we would do a motion to adjourn. Uh, you can get ahold of Ben? That works? Or Aaron? Thank you. I appreciate everyone's input. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All seconded then. Pat and Tom, motion's been made in second. And any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes adjourned at seven twenty. Thank you. Thanks for sticking around so late, everybody.